Okay, I am showing six o'clock, so I'm gonna call this meeting of the Town of Hingham Select Board to order. January 25th, 2022, the time is 6:01 PM. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone else other than Town of Hingham recording this meeting? I see no one. I will note for the record that members of the Select Board participating this evening are Bill Ramsey, Liz Klein, and myself, Joe Fisher. First item on the agenda is to consider approval of the minutes of January 13th, 2022. I am prepared to proceed. Liz, are you?
I am.
And Bill?
I am.
Then I will accept the motion on the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes dated January 13th, 2022.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
They are approved. Next item on our agenda is to consider the request of Burton's Grill LLC doing business as Burton Grill, 94 Derby Street, Suite 279, Hingham, Massachusetts, for a change of manager from Elena Ford to Richard Limberti. And Richard, I believe you are on the line, and please tell me if I pronounced your name correctly.
Limberti is correct.
Good. How are you?
Good. How are you?
What are you serving this evening?
I'm home.
Okay. So if you just explain to us, please, why the change in manager?
I am the new general manager taking over the position, replacing Elena Ford.
Great. And I see that you filed the appropriate licensing authority certification with us. Tom, is this something that the Police Department needs to review? I do know that there was a query for, a query request at least submitted on this.
Yeah, I was just gonna point that out. We did receive our query form. Everything was in order, and the Police Department does not need to review this application.
Okay. So other than asking what is on the menu at Burton's Grill, I will take questions from members of the Select Board, starting with Liz.
I reviewed the package. I did see that the query form had been completed, so no questions. Thank you.
Bill?
I have no questions. Everything seems to be in order.
Are there any members of the public with questions on the change of manager at Burton's Grill? Seeing none, I'm prepared to accept the motion.
I will make a motion to approve the request of Burton's Grill LLC doing business as Burton's Grill, 94 Derby Street, Suite 279, Hingham, Massachusetts, for a change of manager from Elena Ford to Richard Limberti in accordance with the application for change of manager filed with the Town of Hingham on December 21st, 2021, subject to the approval of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
It is approved. We look forward to, uh, to meeting you, Richard, in person.
Sounds good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The next item on our agenda is to consider approval of updates to the General Bylaws of the Town of Hingham for gender-neutral changes. So Tom, I'm gonna let you introduce this and explain how we got here from the past vote at town meeting until this evening.
Sure. So just real brief, the town meeting, as everyone recollects, provided us with an opportunity to, or mandate actually, to update all of our local bylaws to gender-neutral terminology. That first step was taking, was taken very ably by Dave Lane Cooper, a member of the Advisory Committee, and then subsequently by John Coughlin, our town council. And I believe Chairman Fisher had a chance to, to review as well. So it's been through three able reviews, and what's before you is the result of that review.
So I would add to that, it was, uh, all three members of the Select Board have had a chance.
I'm sorry, yes.
And I believe it was actually Article 21 at the last town meeting that gave us the direction to proceed as we are doing this evening. So with that, I will start with Liz, if you have any questions or comments on the proposal.
Um, no real questions. I appreciate all the, the work that was done to complete this. You know, for, for the public, I guess, just to note, obviously Board of Selectmen became Select Board, Chairman became Chair. There's also reference to the Chiefs, Town Clerk, and the removal of he, she, her, him. So it's, all of the pronouns are gender-neutral. So I have had a chance to review it, and I feel comfortable with it.
Thank you. Bill?
I appreciate all the work done to, to, um, to bring the bylaw in, um, yeah, in conformity with the votes taken last, uh, last town meeting. I know that John Coughlin did a lot of work on this article, and as did you, Joe. So I am comfortable with it. I reviewed it over the weekend, and I'm ready to vote when you are.
Are there any members of the public who have questions or comments? And I will actually, because I believe that members of the Advisory Committee may have had a chance to look at this as well. So I will first ask if there are any members of AdCom who have comments on this article.
Joe, we haven't convened our meeting yet, so we still have members joining, so.
So I would ask, well, do you have a quorum at this point?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, then, so then.
So I'd like to call the Advisory Committee meeting for January 25th, 2022, to order adopting the remote meeting language stated at the beginning of the meeting by Select Board Chair Fisher.
Great. So I will call on any member of these Advisory Committee who has questions or comments on the gender-neutral changes to the General Bylaw of the Town of Hingham. I see no hands. Let me just check the next screen. I do not see any hands raised. So I will ask if there are members of the public who have comments or questions on the proposed updates to the General Bylaws. I see no one from the public. I'm just gonna add to what Liz Klein mentioned in terms of the changes that were made. But many of the changes that appear in the General Bylaw, the specific wording was actually mandated by town meeting. Uh, so in my view, what is before us is consistent with and true to the directive of the Town Meeting, Article 21, from our last annual meeting. So I am prepared to take a motion.
I make a motion to approve the revisions to the Town of Hingham General Bylaw in the form attached here too, and to file a copy of said revised General Bylaws with the Town Clerk, all in accordance with Article 21 of the Town of Hingham 2021 Annual, Annual Town Meeting.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
They are approved, and a special thanks going out again to John Coughlin, who did superb work in bringing this to fruition. So thank you, Mr. Coughlin. Next item on our agenda is a joint session with the Community Preservation Committee and Advisory Committee to discuss Ward Article N. Uh, and the Advisory Committee has been called to order. I see Larry Lidner here. If you could call to order the Community Preservation Committee.
So, Joe, I only see three of us here. We're not, we're not a quorum.
So you cannot call your meeting to, are you expecting members to, for additional members to appear?
I, I know that at least one more had intended to come, but I don't know if they're gonna show up. I know that my vice chair can't be here tonight, which is unfortunate because traditionally, the Chair and the Vice Chair present the votes. And I, nobody else has said to me that they're coming or not coming.
So with that in mind, you would not call your committee to order, but you can still participate. You are all residents of the Town of Hingham. So I think it would be helpful if you, Larry, since you are the Chair, you can explain to us what went into Article N and what is being proposed.
Sure. Heidi, if you can just let me screen share, because I can actually just show what we were voting on and what the votes were. Would that be okay, Joe?
Yes, that'd be great.
Larry, you're a co-host, so you should be able to share your screen.
Okay. Why aren't I? So I pressed Screen Share. And hold, press, hold, and I don't know why all of my windows aren't coming. I don't know why, like, I have a bunch of stuff up, and I thought it was all supposed to appear, and then I could choose the one that I wanted to share. Does that make sense?
That, that does make sense. Would it be possible for you to send the material that you would like to present? So Tom, would it be you, or who else is sharing on?
Uh, no, but I could do it.
Yeah, so if you can send whatever you'd like to share to Tom, and he will just throw it up.
Okay, that's just gonna take a minute.
Sure, and then you'd be able to direct him as to which document should be.
I apologize about this. So you're with me? Okay. Just be with me one second.
We need the Jeopardy music, Larry.
Yeah, I can't, for some reason, my, um.
No, I don't think we need Jeopardy, because I see Judy Sneath on the line. She could sing to us, and then we.
Okay. So, okay. Okay, so Tom, I'm sending you the, um, the voting sheet. I'm forwarding it to you. Megan Demore sent it to me, and now it should be in your inbox. So just let me know.
You sent it to my mail address?
Yeah.
This was more fun when we were, we were waiting for you, Larry, than me.
While, while we're getting organized here, um, I see that Mr. Lombardi, Limberti is still on. He's certainly welcome to stay on, but he's not, it's not required, right, Joe?
It's, it is certainly not required, but he is welcome to stay on. And then we could have more, we could have more comments about the menu and things. Here we go. So Larry, it looks like you're sharing now?
It does look like I'm sharing, but, uh, yes, I was able to.
Good.
Well, let's see if I can make this. Here we go. This is what we needed.
Thank you.
Tom, you're redundant.
Not the first time I've been told that, Larry.
Uh, Joe, I will just go through the numbers and stop me or start me as you see fit. So whoa, one second. Let me just go back up. Okay, so we had a budget this year of $1,764,703. That included $97,423 from projects that either didn't go forward or were pulled back or rescinded for some reason. And the rest was, of course, about a million two came from, you know, our taxes that we paid in, our one and a half percent, and we got about $463,000 in the state match. And then we had, we had debt service that we have to pay this year on the Lainerland and the Benjamin Lincoln House, a minimum of $303,346 for the Lainerland and $114,739 for the Benjamin Lincoln House. And those are numbers I got from our town treasurer, Jean Montgomery. So after the debt service, what we had to recommend was $1,346,618. And then out of that, you have to take the full budget that we have minus the money rescinded from other projects, which comes to $1,667,280. And 10% of that number has to go into each of the three CPC buckets, Affordable Housing, Historic Preservation, and Open Space/Recreation. So a minimum of 10% of that had to go into each of the three categories, and that came to $166,728. That wasn't an issue for Open Space Recreation, and it wasn't an issue for Affordable Housing, but it was an issue for Historic Preservation, which I'll get to. So that's kind of the lay of the land of the numbers that we had to work with. And, and here's what we voted on. So we voted $20,000 for the CPC Administrative Fund. So CPC every year pays somewhere between $3,000 and $4,000 to belong to the Community Preservation Coalition, which helps us understand and interpret the state law, the Community Preservation Act, and guides us in how we're allowed to deliberate and what we're supposed to deliberate in, what the rules are for CPC. So that's part of the money. The other thing is, we don't have an administrator currently, so we have to pay somebody to host the meetings and, and write up the minutes. Uh, so that takes some money, and we, uh, it's always a good idea to have a little money as well in case there's a legal issue that arises during the year. If the $20,000 doesn't get spent, it doesn't get hold over to Administrative Fund for the next year. The Community Preservation Act, the law says the money goes back into the General Fund. So what that means is we're voting 20,000 in administration fees for fiscal year '23, and if we don't use all of that, it just goes back into the CPC General Fund for fiscal year 2024. Then, um, on the Lainerland, as I said, the, um, the, the debt service going into this year's fiscal cycle was, on that land is $3,203,765. Jean Montgomery told us our minimum this year was $303,346. And we voted to recommend putting in $571,320 to try to accelerate the payback of that. On the Benjamin Lincoln House, we had $229,478 left. And, um, we actually have two years left on it this year at $114,739, and next year at $114,739. And the reason we voted to go above that to $166,728 was there, there were no other historic preservation projects this year. So our other option would have been, and it came out to an extra $51,989. Our other option would have been to just hold on to that money in a separate bucket for Historic Preservation to use in another year, next year, or some year down the line. But that money would have to go to Historic Preservation, and the committee felt, no, let's pay down that debt. We have the money now. So that's why we made that recommendation to use all of the money that would lead to our meeting, the 10% minimum, into paying down that debt. Then, um, the next thing was South Shore Habitat for Humanity, the creation of two single-family homes at 302 and 304 Whiting Street, each home being three bedrooms, one and a half baths. They requested $166,840, and we voted to recommend $166,840. Um, for the Country Club Management Committee, for the pool complex that they're proposing at the Country Club, they requested a million, and we voted $550,000 toward that project. The fire door opens, open, there were, um, there are these, so there are fire doors at the 30 Facter Street Affordable Housing Complex. And there was a request to put in electronic sensors that, so the doors are always open except when the fire alarm comes on, and then the doors would automatically close, and that was voted down. Um, the request was for $38,430, and only one person out of the nine of us voted for that. Then, um, we voted $289,815 to rebuild, restore the hockey court on Cronin Field. There's significant cracks in it that make it dangerous for hockey players. They could fall and hurt themselves. And that request was by the Recreation Commission, and, um, the vast majority of us thought that that was a good idea. Then there was a, a request to do some work on the building envelope at 132 Scotland Street. And, uh, that was HHA Hingham Housing Authority, as, as was the fire door open systems. The request was for $29,980, and it, it didn't go through. The Cronin Field Basketball Court, um, same thing, there's cracks in it. Um, and there was a request to, to redo it, recreate it. And I, I, I want to say publicly that, um, many of us on the committee found no fault with Mark Thorell's request for that. He, he did a superb job. He was very clear with his numbers, and, and it was a very reasonable ask. But I, I, I can't speak for everybody on the committee, but I think there was and he, and Mark made it clear that if we were only gonna vote for one, the hockey court was more important this year because there's only one hockey court in town and many basketball courts. And, um, and the basketball court could, could wait a little while longer, because people could go to other ones. And I, I'm definitely speaking for myself, and I think to some degree for others. There was a feeling that if we were to do the hockey court and the basketball court this year, which would have been a total of $450,000, that would have been about a third of the $1,346,618 that we had to spend. So that was a lot of ask just on sports courts. But again, I, I don't want to say that was absolutely the feeling of the committee. I think some people felt that, um, the Recreation Committee should not come to CPC as often as it does. There were, there were a variety of reasons that were voted down. But Mark did make a truly terrific presentation about it. And then the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust asked for $100,000 for potential various things that it wanted to get covered this year, and the committee voted against that. So all of the asks together came to $2216,676. And, um, we did not recommend incurring any more debt service. So we came to the total that we had to recommend, including the debt service, which was $1,764,703. So everything I just said makes perfect sense to me. I've been working it for five months, but I understand it's brand new to a lot of people. So if I wasn't clear about something, I'm happy to clarify.
Larry, if, if you could just explain, this is at the, just from the very beginning, you're talking about payments associated with the Lainerland and the Benjamin Lincoln House. Could you just explain what both of those are?
Sure. So a number of years ago, this was before I was on CPC, so I want to say it goes back to maybe something like, um, 2014 or 2015. The town voted to buy, um, 50 acres owned by the Lainer family of, they, um, they front South Pleasant Street to some degree, and they, they, the land goes all the way up behind the houses on Glad Tidings Plain. And, um, the land was bought, I, I, either for $5 million or $4.5 million, I don't remember which. And the year that the town voted to, to buy these 50 acres, CPC put in $500,000, and the rest was bonded. So we're paying down that debt year by year. It was originally a 20-year, it must have been 2015, because it was a 20-year debt service, or we're supposed to go to something like 2036 or 2038. And it's, it's such a large amount of money that last year and this year CPC was looking to and hoping to chip away at that, at that debt a little more. So, um, to free up the money eventually for other projects. So, you know, we, we know interest rates are low right now. We've been advised that they might not always remain low, and even if they do remain low, it's still more than $3,000, $3 million owed. And we thought that was a prudent thing to recommend for that. On the Benjamin Lincoln House, um, so, uh, in 2020, the town voted to help the Hingham Historical Society by the Benjamin Lincoln House to repurpose it as a museum, and, um, the town put in $772,495 of that, of which was bonded, 200-something came straight out of CPC that year. And, um, we're paying it off, and that was a unanimous vote, um, this year to pay the $114,739 plus the $51,989 that we had, that had to be used for Historic Preservation. Rather than put it into a fund for the future, let's just pay down that debt. And if the Select Board decides that we, that our thinking was good on this, next year there will only be about, I think, 60-something thousand left on the Benjamin Lincoln House, and it'll be paid off, and that'll be the end of the story.
Great.
Very, Larry, sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to jump in and just, uh, that, um, it was in 2016 that the town purchased the Lainerland, and it was for $5 million.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Right now, I know that Jean Montgomery told me that with the, with the accelerated debt repayment that CPC recommended last year and that the Select Board approved, we were down to paying this off in 2034. And if the Select Board approves this recommendation this year, we'll be down to somewhere about 2032. So we're, we're pulling yours up, and we're, even with the low interest rates, we're saving a lot of money on interest last year with the extra money that went in. Jean Montgomery told me we saved something like $80,000 in interest, just because it is such a large amount of money over such a long period of time. That's why that interest adds up.
So Larry, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for, thank you to the committee for its hard work. Have any other members of your committee shown up that you would need to convene your committee?
Oh gee, that I don't know. Um.
Let's take a look, just to make sure. I didn't see, but I want to make sure we're.
Let me.
Don't, don't close out of this.
So I can look at the, um.
But you're gonna have to put it back up when you're.
I see Judy. I see, I saw Vicky. I assume she's still here. Let me go on to the second page. No, Joe. It looks like it's just us three.
Okay. Great. So if you could go back to screen sharing, because there may be questions on that.
Sure, sure, sure.
Okay. And, uh, I will.
Okay.
Perfect. And I'm gonna start with, uh, Liz Klein.
Thank you, Larry, and thank you to your committee. I know this is a, um, a, a heavy lift and a lot of work and a lot of responsibility that this committee has. Um, and I, I know it's not taken lightly, so thank you. Um, just a question about the debt service. So I understand, so there's a certain amount of debt service that's required, correct? The $303,346 for Lainer and the $114 for Benjamin Lincoln. Um, okay, but those debt service amounts are not included in, um, the actual article. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. And in fact, I just, Joe just confirmed that with me shortly before this meeting began.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. There are recommendations that the Select Board then makes a determination. It's not something that gets voted on by the town.
Okay. Um, okay, I don't have any questions at this point, Joe.
Thank you. Bill?
Joe, thank you. Uh, Larry, just want to begin by thanking your committee for, you know, the tremendous work that it did. I know a lot of diligence is put into applications this year and every year, uh, starting in September through, uh, tonight and into town meeting. So I want to preface my comments by saying that. So thank you for that. Um, you gave us some insight into the votes. I'm kind of curious. I know that the fire doors open system, uh, for the Housing Authority was very important to that organization. Can you give us some insight into why they didn't get any, any funding? Housing Authority was very important to that organization. Can you give us some insight into why they didn't get any any funding?
Um, yes, again, I mean, it's coming from me, but so I I will try to be the instrument for the committee of nine. But I I think um it was felt by. A number of people on the committee. I mean, a major, this came in even at a majority saying no go. But I think it was felt that fire doors are there. If the fire doors are kept closed. There won't be a fire hazard. And what they were saying is the tenants don't like to keep the fire doors closed. They like to wedge them open with those little. Triangular rubber things. So I. Again, I think I'm getting the the committee right. They felt that, you know, CPC has a limited amount of money to spend. And thirty thousand dollars to make to make it more convenient. For people when they don't need that to keep the building safe from fire, if they would just close the fire doors when they walk through. Anyway, I think I I that I think that's why that decision was made. That the money didn't need to be spent to keep the building, to keep the fire doors from working properly.
The the five to four decision on the pool, I think this is an important point here too, because I think this is going to be probably be an issue at town meeting. Am I correct that the four individuals in the minority? Um, they actually voted that they wanted to give more than the five fifty?
That is correct. I I can tell you um exactly how all of this happened.
Yeah, please do. I think it's important to note that on the record. So go ahead.
Yeah, I I think that I think the the pool is um. Is 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 the vote that um needs explanation and clarification. So um to start from the beginning, it was the one project for which. All nine of us came in with a different number, you know, because what we do is we walk in with a vote and then we talk all evening and then we make. A final vote. People change their numbers before the final vote. So every single not, no two people. Had the same number to the initial vote and the votes were um zero. With an idea to hold back five hundred thousand and ask the country club. Um, Management Committee to come back next year with a different plan. Nobody, nobody didn't want a pool. It was a matter of having um different levels of anxiety about the pool project as it was presented. So anyway, the votes were zero, two hundred fifty thousand, four hundred thousand, four hundred fifty thousand. Five hundred fifty thousand, five hundred seventy one thousand, seven hundred forty two thousand. Nine hundred thousand and a million. Those were the initial votes. And um as an exercise. Um, going into the meeting and realizing I wasn't sure if I was going to be able to get a majority. I I I just um I tallied all those numbers and divided by nine and the the um it came out to the average being. Five hundred seventy one thousand dollars per person out of all those nine votes. It's just. Keep that number in your head because it'll come back in this explanation. So then um what happened was um, so there I there were four of us who had. Concerns about the project. But most of the the four who had concerns about the project didn't want to vote zero because they wanted to show that they supported. A pool project, even though they were concerned about the project as it was presented. And five of us, I think, did not have concerns about the pool project as it was presented. And um. They they were okay with it and they, you know, and so then, but then we. We always try to come to consensus. In fact, we always try to come to unanimous consensus and we we weren't able to on that one. And the way the discussion worked was uh and walking into the meeting. Seeing that there were two numbers in the fours and two numbers in the fives, I just figured, okay, we'll all coalesce. Uh, we'll end up coalescing somewhere in that neighborhood. I mean, it was just what I figured was going to happen. Um, but what actually happened in the meeting was um. The middle number was that five hundred fifty thousand dollar number. And that person made it clear that they were not going to budge. Um, they were not going to budge downward. They did say they were willing to go up, but they were not willing to go down. So what happened was the four people who were below five fifty came up to five fifty. So those were numbers remembers from zero. Up to four hundred fifty thousand, coming up to five fifty. And then we had the majority of five fifty. And the people who were above five fifty. Actually went higher in their um amounts than uh four, excuse me, three of the four people. Went higher in their amounts rather than um trying to come to a consensus or. Or or talking that five fifty person up higher. So um. The person who was at seven forty two went up to a million and the person who was at nine hundred went up to nine sixty nine and the person who was at five seventy one. Went into the eights. The only one who came down was the one who had been at a million initially. That person came down into the eights. So in in a in a very ironic way. You know, the 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 majority vote. Came mostly from the people who had concerns about the project going forward. They they came up. And yes, the ones who wanted, the ones who are in the minority and they never coalesced around a single number themselves. They were higher than uh the five fifty we voted and they went even higher. Um, as we got to a majority of five fifty, there wasn't um. There wasn't a push to try to get us to a single number. So. That that, yes, that's how that went.
But okay, or and um and Larry, so and you were obligated to pay. How much into debt service? Three fourteen? Did I hear you say that?
Four eighteen altogether.
But you opted to pay how much? You paid above the four eighteen, correct?
Altogether in the debt service, we paid, let me look at the number six, uh seven something, about seven thirty.
So I guess, you know, having been someone who's gone through this process with, you know. A variety of applications over the years and admittedly some better than others. I just know how. Much work it is for applicants to put this work into these applications. You know, I personally would rather have seen this money go back into some of these applications, but. What was the rationale of the committee, if you could briefly? And not funding some of these applications, but putting the money back into the, you know, and more into debt service than what was required?
Well, I mean, the the ones that didn't get voted on, the 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 majority of the committee, and in fact, the law. Either unanimously or almost unanimous unanimously, just felt that they weren't worthy enough projects, Bill. And, you know, we have a responsibility to the town. Um. CPC is on the hook for like three and a half million dollars between the Lerner Land and the Benjamin Lincoln House and we felt. That it was, we weren't convinced that the other projects deserved funding. And if we if we were convinced, less money would have gone to recommending acceleration of of the debt repayment.
Okay.
Just, uh, can I make a comment on that just to follow on, Joe? Um. So I think I appreciate that there, these are all worthy projects and applicants. And it's a very, very difficult process. Um, I certainly share in Bill's disappointment. That the pool did not get more funding. Um, as we know, that has been supported by town meeting. Town meeting has already decided, we want this pool. We've already made an investment in this process. So I would have liked to have seen that uh come in higher. Um, and I appreciate, I'm glad to see the Habitat for Humanity House is being funded. Um, but I, you know, knowing that we're only at the ten percent requirement for affordable housing, I I hope that we can do better. In that area next year.
May I respond to?
Please, go ahead, Larry.
Okay, so um I just want to make a clarification about the town already approving the pool project. Um, I looked at the twenty twenty warrant. The town approved a design and construction documents for a pool. And and it was very clear that it was a replacement eight lane, twenty five yard outdoor town pool with a zero depth. Entry for children and those were special needs, a splash pad and locker rooms. The town never approved two pools and I just got um. An email from the Country Club this morning saying as we, as we went through the process, we decided to separate it into two pools to make. Uh, scheduling easier for the two different constituencies who use the pools. But in point of fact, that was a decision they made on their own. That wasn't something the town decided on. And on the on the affordable housing, I would say, I think it's fair to say that the the. Um CPC in general, no matter who the makeup is, because it always changes a little bit from year to year as people sign off. CPCers are very passionate about affordable housing and our responsibility and our wish. To put money toward affordable housing. We felt um that most of the applications for affordable housing this year were too weak. And we didn't want to give money to them to show that we were giving money to affordable housing. On the Habitat for Humanity. It was unanimous from the start. It never changed. Nobody ever had a problem with them all the way through the funding cycle. They had a. Super, super strong application. They understood um. That the intent of the Community Preservation Act is to create or purchase affordable housing. That's the number one reason. That affordable housing is included in CPA, um not for fixes and administrative expenses. But even that could be allowable. We just felt they were weak applications. That that's the call we made based on the information we had.
Liz, are you, you good?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And Bill, it wasn't clear to me if you were finished with your questions.
So I'm good. I appreciate the answer, Larry. Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there members of, actually, I will turn this over to uh the Advisory Committee. Uh, and ask the Chair of AdCom to uh conduct its hearing concerning this action.
Thanks, Joe. I ask any AdCom member who wants to raise your hand, use raise hand function if you'd like to speak, to ask a question. Kristen? Or you have Dave, Dave, or does Dave want to go first?
I just had a question first about just um. You know, the conversation has come up about the paying the extra to the debt. If we weren't in agreement to do that. And we didn't support it, would it just stand that that number is still the amount that goes through? Or do you, would you possibly go back to your committee to revote? I just don't know how that works.
So I I had thought, based on the the way the warrant read last year, that it just goes through. But I spoke to um Joe a little bit before this meeting and he said, actually. It it's not, it it, it's not a warrant article thing, but it's actually a recommend, recommendation we make. And the decision is made by the select board and um it wouldn't be revoked. I mean, our votes are done. But what would happen is if the select board decided, no, it didn't want to accelerate the debt repayment. The money would just come back to CPC to use for next year.
So um Larry, if I can just add to that. We would at a minimum need to make sure that the statutory ten percent. Uh, items were covered. So we certainly could not reduce anything below the uh the ten percent uh minimums that. CP that that the Community Pres- Preservation Committee is obliged to take. And um just to to correct one thing on the record, I think Liz had mentioned that we were. Uh, at the ten percent, we are above the ten percent um for affordable housing. Uh, which doesn't mean that we should lessen our commitment and lessen our determination to keep it going, but we are above the ten percent. We we are, we are not barely at it.
Sorry, no, I I just meant ten percent of this amount, not.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Got it. Um. Julie, back to you.
Thanks. Dave?
Oh, thanks, Julie. And hi, Larry. Thanks again for your work on this. Um, could you speak? I I I do have some thoughts, but I just was curious if you could give a little. More insight into the minority vote on the debt repayment?
Okay, so everybody, we, it was unanimous about the debt repayment on the um Benjamin Lincoln House. So I I think you're talking more about the Lerner Land, right?
Yeah, I mean, Benjamin Lincoln House, I get as a requirement.
Well, it's not a requirement in.
Well, with the historical, with the historical ten percent, I get that.
Yeah, okay. So on the Lerner Land. Uh, it was really a seesaw, Dave. The people who voted more money for the pool voted less money on the Lerner Land. They would have. I mean, they would have put the money toward the pool and not paid down the extra on the Lerner Land. That that's why it's a five to four vote, both on the pool and the Lerner Land.
Gotcha. All right, well, let me, so I I will confess to having a hard time. Getting my head around putting scarce CPC dollars to debt repayment when there are other projects out there, whether it's the pool or the. Basketball court. And so I've been wrestling with it over the last couple of days and I went back to the. Lerner article comment. And again, I'm not a lawyer. I don't, I don't think the comment in itself is binding, but at least it's instructive. As to what town meeting was told about this project and what they could expect in the future. And so the Lerner Land, and I'm just going to paraphrase it here, the comment referred to a twenty year borrowing at three percent. And I guess I would note that we're certainly borrowing in a twenty year range, but we're paying less than three percent significantly. So the town's better off. So far. And then goes on to say that the annual debt service, including principal and interest, would start. At about twenty nine point seven percent of expected annual funds, uh CPC funds. And end at eleven percent for an average annual allocation of about twenty percent. And so this is the part that I kind of, it, I don't know if it confirmed or reinforced my concerns about the overpayment of principal. Uh, because when I look at your available funds, the total amount of of uh. Debt service that you're paying into Lerner this year as a percent of available funds is thirty four point three percent. So it's higher than the guidance to town meeting. For the twenty sixteen debt service and the town meeting's assumption was that every year it would step down. Because I think we're paying that in level principle. So, you know, I I don't know how. I I throw it out there because I guess I'm I'm struggling with. Uh, the town not clamoring for, well, the town not overpaying for this, the interest rates aren't exorbitant. The town not being guided to a declining percentage of available funds being put towards this. Um, and then this jumping up this year and then leaving us with some, you know, some projects that uh. A a significant number of, not a majority, but a significant number of your members thought deserved more funding. Um. All right, so I'm I'm a little bit at odds. And and then I guess I just would, in closing, say that I'm. I I might feel a little bit less queasy about it if it was going to go to the town for a vote. To decide if they thought this was a good use of funds. But as you just pointed out, it doesn't sound like it will get to the town as a vote. And that makes me, that continues my queasiness, I guess. So that's that's my thoughts. I don't know if you have a reaction.
I I appreciate your concern. Um. I want to point out that last year we paid even more extra money toward the Lerner Land debt service. And there there weren't, there wasn't a concern that we were doing that, that we were recommending that. So um. I I I'm hearing you and others that there's disappointment that CPC didn't apply more money to projects that were on the table this year, but. You know, we have to make the call that we see fit to make. We're the ones with our nose to the grindstone, actually. From September and in some cases since August and we. And um called it as we saw it, Dave. Um, I I don't know. I'm I'm sorry you're disappointed. You know, we we would love to put money to projects that we thought were good. Value for the town and that the town should put the money toward. We we just, this is the way we saw this year. And by the way, there was only one project that they, that the vote was. Very split and that was the pool. Other than on on the other things, the vote was either unanimous or almost unanimous.
Well, I'll just, I guess I'll just say it again. I mean, I sat through all these meetings too. I mean, I'm a liaison to CPC, so I. Appreciate how much work you do and I'm I'm witness to much of it. I guess I would just point out that I, I, you know, just given what you said tonight around the basketball court, for example. I didn't hear you say. for example, I didn't hear you say that that wasn't a worthy project. I, I heard you say that doing so would be a lot of money for rec out of, out of the pile and that that was, I guess, not palatable. But I, I guess, so I'm, I'm careful to say that I, I didn't hear criticisms of the, of the basketball court project as a project. If it comes back next year, I'm certain it'll get a good hearing. And I guess I just wrestle with, you know, in a pandemic, a need to fix an outdoor space for people and we're putting money towards principal repayment on low interest debt. That's my two cents.
Thanks, Dave. Bob?
Thanks, Julie. I was hoping to offer some historical perspective about the adoption of the Community Preservation Act, the CPA in Hingham. Hingham was one of the early adopters of the CPA and recognized the value that it could bring to our community. And of course, in the early years, we were getting a state match of roughly 50% of what the town was putting in. At, at the same time, the CPA basically imposes a surtax on all of us in the town of Hingham, which we can voluntarily continue or discontinue. And in roughly the first 12 or so years of the CPA's involvement in Hingham, borrowing was not even considered. It only came to the fore with the Heritage Museum and Visitor Center. And at the time, I was the Chair of the CPC and the Project Manager for the CPC for the Heritage Museum and Visitor Center. And it was questioned whether the town really wanted to get behind borrowing for CPA projects or not. And we made a presentation at town meeting in favor of borrowing because of the extraordinary nature of the Heritage Museum and Visitor Center. And we basically, at the time, were telling the town that these were extraordinary matters and that we did not really see that borrowing was the path for the future for the CPC. We did have two extraordinary other projects in the Benjamin Lincoln House and the Lainerland. I, I know as I was exiting the CPC, I was an advocate for early paydown of the debt on the Heritage Museum. I, I think the job of the CPC, as I think Larry has indicated, is a difficult one every year. There are always more project proponents seeking more dollars than there are dollars available. And we, we don't know what is going to be on the horizon in the future in terms of very meritorious projects that the CPC is going to be faced with. I think that the CPC on an annual basis has to make its best decision as to how the available Community Preservation Act dollars can be spent, including for debt reduction. Because that debt reduction puts the CPC in the future in a position where it has greater options to deal with something that's extraordinary. I mean, I can, I can envision some of those things for this town, you know, in the next 10 or 20 years. So it's, it's a difficult job. I think the members of the CPC this year struck an appropriate balance in their committee deliberations. And I, I think to the extent that they decided that early retirement of the debt or accelerated retirement of the debt was the appropriate way to go, that especially if it's ultimately saving the town interest dollars, that that is something that the committee was serving us all in, in doing. And I, I, I think I'll leave my comments there. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Sarah?
Hi, thanks so much. And Larry, thank you for all your work. And I, I just would like to, to take the moment to, I, I echo Dave's comments. And I, I'd like to maybe go on the record. I remember voting for the Lainer project and I remember being very much in support of it. And, and with the one concern being how much of CPC funds was going to be tied up into the future. So I, I'd love to go on record just to say that for future years, I, I, I think we should, we should stick to the, you know, percentage that town meeting agreed upon, you know, unless there's an extraordinary reason to pay down more principal. You know, I, I think, you know, in, in this case, a project like the pool, you know, really would have been a, a much more compelling use of the funds. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Matt?
Hey, similar to Sarah and Dave, just wanted to express disappointment with the decision about the pool. I did have a question tied to it is it, it seems like you made a decision to just generally value the open space in the parkland where I feel like we have hundreds of acres of that across Hingham in favor of a project that actually brings the community together in a very real and meaningful way and one that has been missing from the community for the last few years. And my question was just that, Larry, it seemed like you indicated something about the project specifically, the pool and what was agreed to in the warrant articles a year ago versus the current kind of design scheme played a factor in that. Was that, can you elaborate on that? Was there something specific about the project details that led the group to be so divided on it? Or did I misread what you said earlier?
Well, I think the group was divided, I think the group was divided between people who did not have concerns about the project as it was presented and people who had concerns about the project as it was presented, yes. So one of the things was when, when town meeting approved $500,000 for design and construction documents in 2020, they approved those design and construction documents to be for one pool that would have both lanes and also be a family pool for little kids and whatnot and splash pads. And, and by the way, everybody thinks the splash pads are a fantastic idea because first of all, the little kids love them and it also extends the season because you can do splash pads a little bit outside of the end of August and the end of June. But, but the town said it wanted one pool and this design is two pools. So that was one thing that came up. Another thing that came up, Matt, was the, the bathhouse that's being proposed is a $2.5 million bathhouse. And definitely the people who had concerns, this I'm, I'm not mis, I'm not getting it wrong. They thought that was a lot of money for a bathhouse. There was also concern that the pool was going to be built in such a way that sometime in the future, it might be possible to put a bubble over the whole thing and make it a, a year-round facility. The, the issue is, it, it, it came clear during the, 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 all of the meetings over the course of CPC's meetings this year that a seasonal pool, you know, that's only used in the summer, that breaks even or earns a little revenue over the cost of the summer. But that, once it becomes an indoor facility, that's doesn't break even financially. And in fact, that was even said in the 2020 warrant, that, that a year-round pool wouldn't, wouldn't be a financially good bet, should I say. So at, at the same time, it said in the 2020 warrant that at some point in the future, the Country Club Committee might fundraise for a bubble on its own. So it was kind of confusing. There was this clear statement that a seasonal pool breaks even or earns a little revenue and a year-round pool doesn't, but they might raise funds for a bubble later on to prepare the pool for that. And that was a lot of the discussion that was going on with CPC, this funding cycle, that it's a seasonal pool, but it might become a year-round pool later on. And the Hingham High School swim team could practice there and maybe other teams could practice there and rent and, you know, they, they would have to pay to use it and maybe that would help bring up the money. But then it came out that towns that have a, a, a year-round facility always lose money to the tune sometimes of $200,000 to $300,000 a year. And that has to be, that shortfall has to be made up by the town. And, you know, we say the word town, but that's you and me and everybody else on this phone call. So there was all of that confusion and concern. And I, I think that's what made almost half of us feel very concerned that, about this project as presented. I think if the Country Club Committee had said, we're coming here with our one pool and splash pads and our modest bathhouse and there's going to be enough parking because they also talked about now there wouldn't be enough parking by the pool and people would have to take a shuttle bus from someplace else to the pool. If they came with a, a more modest proposal of one seasonal pool and the splash pad than a modest, than a modest bathhouse, I think you would have seen, and again, I, I can't swear it, I think you would have seen at least $800,000 go toward the pool and little to nothing more going to Lainer. I think all of that confusion is what, and concern is what created the nine different numbers upfront and the lack of ability to come to a unanimous or near unanimous consensus at the end. I spoke so much, I, I.
It makes sense. I just want to be careful if we don't, unless I'm thinking about this the wrong way. We're doing breakeven analysis on this and maybe it's unique because it's the social country club. But I don't think we put the Lainerland through the same rigor where we say, okay, what's our breakeven of revenues accrued based, because nobody pays, right? So I just want to be careful, but that's not a framework that we're using for things that are meant to be building the community. And it's just, again, disappointing, even with the scope of the project that we saw as a parent of three young kids in the town, that it's, that it wasn't fully funded. And, but I understand, you know, point of view of the CPC and, and your, your points are well made.
Thanks. Thanks, Matt. Davealine?
Yeah, I just have mainly a comment. I appreciate the support for the Habitat for Humanity House. I think that's really important. I'm disappointed that there wasn't funding for other affordable housing. And I just want to caution because it seems to me that CPC looks at affordable housing as let us get the 10% that were required, maybe a little bit more. Last year was an exception and I recognize that and it was, I think, a good one. Some communities like Hingham, like, that are like Hingham in terms of affluence and difficulty. It's hard to fund affordable housing projects in towns like ours and CPC is one of the few ways to do that. And so it's, it's disappointing that we look at it as the 10% and some of those communities use almost all of their CPC money for affordable housing. I think the Housing Production Plan talks about that. So I'm just, I'm just disappointed in that part, but I'm, I'm very glad that Habitat for Humanity was fully supported in its application. So just a comment.
Julie, may I respond to Davealine?
Sure.
Okay. So Davealine, we weren't thinking about meeting 10% minimum. We were thinking about what's a really, what are the great projects? And that, that's where we were coming from. We were not being stingy with affordable housing. I, I say to you and to Matt and to Dave and others who are disappointed, I think we would have gladly put zero extra money toward the Lainerland if we felt passionate about the other projects that came forward.
I guess I would just like to see us a little more passionate about affordable housing in general. So that's.
Thanks, Davealine. Is there anyone else from the advisory committee who would like to speak? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands raised. So I'll turn it back over to you, Joe.
Thank you, Julie. So I'm going to take questions from members of the public. But before I do, I just want to comment on the, the swimming pool question about indoor use, use of the CPC funds. So my understanding, and, and I believe it is correct, that indoor recreational structures, such as an enclosed, fully enclosed swimming pool, are not eligible for Community Preservation Act funding. So that one of the concerns that was, that went into the town meeting vote for the swimming pool, and I believe that was also guiding the Community Preservation Committee, was making sure that however they funded the swimming pool, that the proposal itself was consistent with state law that would allow CPC funding. So that was an additional aspect to the review of, of the pool project. And with that, I will take comments from members of the public. I'm going to start with Judy Sneath.
Thank you, Joe, and everyone for your good questions. I am a member of the planning board, appointed to the Community Preservation Committee and was one of the four members who voted higher amounts for the pool at the Country Club and lower amounts for the Lainerland. All of the members of the CPC profess to be enthusiastic supporters of having a pool in Hingham. The, the, the town meeting in 2021 gave the, the Country Club guidance on what elements they wanted in that pool. And those are the elements that are in the design. The bathhouse that was designed conforms to the code for how many showers, how many toilets, given the size of the pool. And the number of pools and the configuration of pools was, was designed in accordance with the users. The CPC looks at funding projects, but we are not experts on the programmatic design of a swimming pool. Kevin Whelan of the Country Club is that person. And I think also made a fabulous presentation to the CPC. The reason why I am passionate about this pool, however, is because I believe, like affordable housing, this swimming pool is an important equalizer in the town of Hingham, which is so affluent, which has so many pools with private, so many homes with private pools. And people need to know how to swim. We're on the ocean and there is a large part of our population also that doesn't have access to that. And this, as somebody said earlier, this is a means of bringing this town together and, you know, equalizing opportunities for children in this town. So I have struggled with this. I don't, I don't like to be on the minority side of things. But I, I feel like CPC is not a pool designer. We're not experts in recreation and how these things should be built. If we had an issue with the size of something, this is a $7 million project, more funding wouldn't get them anywhere near the $7 million. Make a recommendation to try to cut costs. But if we support the pool, this town should put the appropriate funds behind the pool. And I, I, the vote has been taken, but I do believe that the Board of Selectmen has some wiggle room here and could, rather than support the additional, the acceleration of the debt payment to the Lainerland, recommend to town meeting that, that those funds be applied towards the pool. Because after all, if the town approves the pool at town meeting, the town will be borrowing the money. So this would reduce the amount of debt that, that, that the town would be assuming for the pool by using funds that are available to us today, rather than accelerating debt payment, which was not something that the town, that town meeting, it wasn't a town meeting imperative. So please, I, if there is anything the Board of Selectmen can do about, about this use of funds, I would recommend they do so. Thank you. uh use of funds, I would recommend they do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Uh, I see Mary Power has her hand raised.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, but we can't see you.
Yep, yep. Uh, that, that's by design tonight, everybody. Thanks very much. And um Larry, Judy, um entire CPC, you know, thanks again for um never an easy job that you have. And I, I'm actually just kind of want to speak to, I, I think, a process question that's come up tonight around, you know, this question of accelerating debt. And um, you know, I think what we've all sort of learned is that once town meeting authorizes a project, a CPC project that's financed with debt, um, future CPC committees have the authority and the sole authority to accelerate the pay down of debt. And you know, that's how it works in Hingham. It's how it works everywhere. Uh, that's legal. Um, but I'm actually coming here tonight to speak to you because that makes me uneasy really for two reasons. Um, first of all, because of the limited funds and the competition for funding, when the CPC says yes to accelerating debt, it basically means saying no or underfunding other projects. And you know, I think what Dave Anderson has pointed out is that that is one decision that town meeting doesn't get to have a voice in, um, which is kind of unusual and, and makes me uneasy. Um, I think secondly, you know, that these questions of how much debt CPC should carry, whether to accelerate debt, these are really important financial decisions that Hingham's going to have to wrestle with for the next several years at a minimum. Um, I think CPC has wonderful procedures and processes. They've evolved over time. But I don't think there are any policies that I'm aware of that speak to these debt questions because as Bob Curley pointed out, they're kind of new. And as a result, what I think is starting to happen is the CPC is put in a very difficult position of making financial policy decisions at the same time it's considering projects. Um, listening to this conversation, listening to the committee's deliberations, I think these are really important conversations to have. And I kind of feel like they need to happen a little earlier in the process and it might make the committee's job a little bit easier. Um, I would recommend that, you know, in, in the, in the off season that the CPC look at potentially enhancing its processes to consider establishing some sort of a way for a formal evaluation of debt at the start of each funding cycle to consider whether it wants to adopt a metric amount about how much debt we want to carry at any point in time. And thirdly, some protocols for the acceleration of debt payments. Um, I think that these, I would, I would throw these out as enhancements to help a wonderful program and to make the job of the tireless volunteers who do so much for this committee um to potentially make their life a little bit easier in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Are there other members of the public with comments or questions? Tom, if you could scan, I am scanning and I see no one else. I just want to make sure that I'm not.
Yeah, I don't see any other hands, Joe.
Okay. I see Larry raising his hand. Yes, Larry.
May I, um. So one, I'm, I, I, I'm sorry that a lot of people feel disappointed with the way CPC voted, but I, I stand by our votes. We were a passionate and sometimes very argumentative group. And, and we did work very hard, as many of you have pointed out. But one of the things, and I keep returning to this is um it's, it's, you know, you, I can't know what would have happened, but it it's possible that the extra money that was voted on for the Lainer land debt, which is about um two hundred sixty eight thousand dollars, it's possible that five people voting for the pool would still have not voted more than five fifty and just kept that money in the CPC fund for future years. I mean, w- we made our decisions based on what we thought the value was of each project for this year. And I appreciate what Mary's saying about maybe at the beginning of a cycle, trying to come up with metrics and making decisions about percentages. The problem is every year we're presented with a different set of projects. There are some years where CPC wants to fund everything and it simply doesn't have the money for it and you have to decide whether to bond. The group as a whole just um to not put too fine a point on it was underwhelmed by a number of the projects. So that's why we ended up putting the money, recommending money to accelerate debt repayment. Um, if, if we, if the group were more excited about the projects before us, less money or no money would have gone to debt repayment.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? So um Larry, I, I appreciate the presentation. Um, there's no question that under the statute, it is your committee uh that is authorized to make the recommendations. And uh it's no one's intent to uh, to do a revote. Um, in, at this meeting, uh, we are not the Community Preservation Committee. Um, and we, we take your recommendations. Um, and they, they are the committee's recommendations and we accept that. Um, I think you heard input about how uh, well, we heard at least from one member of your committee who explained her vote. And you heard from others who, I think, voiced their views that if they were on the committee, they may have gone a different, a different route. Um, they are not on the committee. Uh, and it is your committee that is charged and you have the responsibility. Uh, and we, we respect that you have discharged that to uh uh the best of your abilities. Uh, and actually, you haven't fully discharged it. You're still in the process. Um, so uh, we, we, we thank you for your work. Um, I think the concerns that you heard about the swimming pool, um, I mean, I was not a participant at, at the um committee meetings, uh, but what I've heard from you is the concerns of, of an oversight committee. Um, and it was your task and it remains your task to uh make an assessment based on what was presented to you as to what would be in the best interest of the town. Um, and so uh, again, I appreciate the work that you've done. Um, that doesn't mean you won't hear from other residents. You won't hear from folks at town meeting. Um, but that goes with the job, as, as you, as you know. Um, this is not an item that we will be voting on this evening. Um, typically, I think the uh, the select board uh takes at least a week to uh, to consider things, uh, so it is not on our agenda as a voting item. But as something for uh Larry and uh his folks to present to us, and we appreciate that. Um, Julie, is there anything else that uh AdCom wants to consider on this, on this agenda?
Um, no. Um, thank you for this joint meeting tonight, and we will have the opportunity to discuss as a committee, the individual projects and um work on the comment for the CPC article at a future date. So, thank you.
Great. Uh, so are you, is AdCom continuing or will you be uh adjoining or adjourning?
So um I've been given the uh, I, advice of counsel that I just adjourned the advisory committee meeting right now, and then we're going to reconvene in our own advisory committee meeting in a couple minutes after a break. So uh, for the AdCom members, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Let me, um, before you do that, so it sounds like you are, you're not adjourning, you are um basically temporarily uh going into a recess and then reconvening at another location.
Yeah, so I checked on that, Joe, and I was I don't, John, I don't know if John Koffler is still on the uh call or in the meeting, but I had always been intending to go into recess and then um, and then reconvene, but then I was advised to, to do otherwise. So I don't know if John.
John, just, yeah, just, just for clarity, is there, is there a separate posting for an AdCom, a separate meeting after this on a different Zoom call, or is this the only posting?
It's a different call. It was all part of the same agenda, but there were two different Zoom login um items. The first was for to join the select board, but then um I wrote that we would recon- recess and reconvene in our AdCom Zoom.
Okay. And I think.
A separate posting for our meeting.
What, but is it the same agenda or not?
It's the same agenda. I mean, the, the, the agenda starts with that we're going to be in a joint meeting with the select board.
So I think, I think Joe's right then. And I, I thought there were two separate postings with two agendas, I think.
Okay.
Julie, I, I think then we would just have you recess and then you would just reconvene on your own separately.
Thanks. Sorry.
I thought there were two agendas.
Sorry for the confusion.
So Julie, for recess, that does not require a vote. You can just as chair declare that.
All right, the advisory committee will go into recess and reconvene in our advisory committee Zoom. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So um Larry, if you can take down or whoever is, there we go.
Okay.
Good. So um, we've concluded our discussion uh on this item. Again, thank you. You're welcome to continue with us for the rest of our meeting or go get some food, whatever, whatever, whatever.
Get some food. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mary.
So the next item on our agenda uh is discussion of three different warrant articles, Articles C, J, and M. And we're going to start uh with Article C, and I will turn that over to Tom Mayo.
Sure. Thank you, Joseph. Uh, many of you may remember, if you were paying attention last week, that we voted this article last week. Um, there have been, uh, uh, after a bit more careful review, uh, we have identified a few um a few of the committees that should have been on the list that were not. So we're just, I'm just going to ask the board just out of, you know, just to dot our i's and cross our t's. Let's um, let's revote this, this uh article with the correct listing that you have in front of you.
Liz, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Bill?
No questions.
Any member of the public with questions? Seeing none, I will take a vote on um Article C.
I will make a motion to recommend favorable action of Article C.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
And Joe, hi. Approved. Next, we move to Article J, which is the Elder Services Revolving Fund. And uh, Tom and is Jennifer Young on? There you are.
She is here.
How are you, Jennifer?
I'm okay. How is everybody?
We are doing well. Thank you for being here. And if you could uh explain to us, what is an Article J?
Like, I can, um, I can tee it up if you'd like, Joe.
Please.
So uh Article J is similar to the article we did last week where with the um, with the Building Department Revolving Fund. This is where we identify the um uh funds available to the uh Elder Services Department for uh that, that can be taken from their, their annual revolving fund. But that fund generates about eighty thousand dollars through um classes that are held during the course of the year, day trips that are taken, et cetera. Uh, it's, what's generated is a, generated is approximately eighty thousand dollars a year. And that is what is being requested to be used and flowed into and made available uh next year. There is an annual uh balance remaining of the, in that account after the eighty thousand dollars is used of about five to seven thousand dollars. So um, not a significant number um in, in one that allows us to avoid uh zeroing out that account, which we would never want to do. So.
And, and Tom, is this recommend a recommended amount similar to what has been approved at prior town annual meetings?
Yes, it is. And, and of course, Jennifer is here to answer any specific questions anyone has, but.
Terrific. Liz? Any questions?
Thank you, Jennifer. Um, just a quick question. So can you just explain again the fees that go, go into this? Is, is it any of the state funding or grants or just user fees?
It is strictly user fees. So any of our fitness classes, educational programs that we charge fees for um when we ran day trips, um, the costs associated with that with renting the buses and, you know, park passes that the seniors would use um would all come out of and go back into this fund.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Welcome.
Bill?
Hey, Jennifer, good to see you tonight. Uh, thanks for coming on. I, I, so the fees that are charged are generally just to pay for the, what the instructors or the, the bus, the bus gas, things like that, correct? Both is the minimum fees.
Yeah, it, it's all related to the programs themselves. Um, you know, in Quick History, a couple of years ago, it was a little bit um lower. It was a sixty thousand dollar spending cap. Um, we were getting pretty close to hitting that when the pandemic hit. Um, so we did request eighty thousand dollars in the upward and forward motion that we plan to have here at the department. Um, so we're keeping that level of eighty thousand dollars. The cost of doing business is going up. The instructors would like to increase the funds that they're receiving for their services. And we're really trying to manage making our programs affordable and accessible to the seniors by keeping the costs to register as low as possible and really slimming out what's left over at the end of the year.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Um, are there any members of the public with comments or questions? I am seeing none. Um, so Tom, I just want to be, be clear. So this is uh the eighty thousand dollars is consistent with what we voted on uh last year?
Yes, it is.
Great. I have no other questions and I am prepared to take a motion.
Make a motion to recommend favorable action of Article J.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
And Joe, hi. Thank you. It's approved. And Jennifer, wonderful to see you. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is Article M concerning a transfer of harbor revenues to Municipal Waterways Improvement and Maintenance Fund. And I believe Ken Corson is with us. Ken, how are you?
I'm good. Thank you.
Um, really, really great to see you. Uh, so would you uh please explain Article M?
Similarly, if you, I, I can tee it up and turn it over to, to, to end this first questions. Uh, so this is simply a transfer of harbor revenues. So Ken's office generates a number of revenues during the course of the year. Uh, harbor mooring fees, um, parking fees and the like. Uh, and we're just transferring the fees that are generated through that department into the um Waterways Improvement Maintenance Fund, ultimately for the purpose of the once a decade or so um uh dredging effort that the town needs to make down at the harbor. But uh, with that, Ken, if you want to.
Absolutely. I can, I can expand upon that.
Yeah, be, can be, just before you do, um, so Tom, with respect to this uh vote and the vote we just took on Elder Services, are our votes consistent with what we've been seeing in the budgets that about the uh use of these funds for uh the next fiscal year?
Uh, yes, this has, this is always contemplated, this article, if that's what you mean.
Yes, exactly. Okay. Sorry, Ken. Sorry to interrupt.
That's right. So in 2019, at the annual town meeting, the town authorized the municipal waterways improvement and maintenance fund. And under state law, the town's required to put 50% of its um boat excise tax into that fund. It's required to put all of its mooring fees into that fund. And the town can put additional fees into that, that fund. And that's what this article contemplates. It contemplates putting the other 50% of the mooring fees into that fund as well as any additional fees that the, the Harbor Masters Office generates, which would be such as tickets and stuff like that, ticketing fees. Um, as well as any parking fees that the town generates for the use of, of slips or moorings in the harbor. So that's, that's really what this is, is looking to do. It's looking to take um a couple of other fees that we generate that aren't spelled out in the statute and put those couple of fees into the Waterways Fund um and reserve them for dredging and other capital expenses that the Harbor Masters Office might have from time to time. Um, such as engines and so forth. Um, those fees on an annual basis come out to about eighty five thousand dollars. Um, when I say those fees, those are the fees that would be transferring, transferring from the general fund into the Waterways um Improvement and Maintenance Fund um this year if this were to pass town meeting.
So am, am I correct uh that the, the fund uh was actually established relatively recently in 2019?
That's correct. It was established in 2019. I believe we had a, a, a previous version of, of a previous fund and
Right.
and um, but exactly, it was established in 2019.
Yep, a- and the, the fund was established specifically to receive these revenues um to help pay for the dredging of, of the harbor and other harbor related expenses. Yes.
Yes.
Liz, any questions?
I can. How are you?
Good, thank you. How are you?
Good, thanks. Um, just just a point of clarification. So do all of the boat excise taxes go into this fund automatically, or is it a portion?
Automatically fifty percent goes in, has to go into the municipal waterways improvement and maintenance fund.
Okay.
This article speaks to the other fifty percent that's in the general fund and allows this would allow the town to put that fifty percent in, which would mean that a hundred percent of the town's boat excise tax should be going into this fund.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Bill?
I know questions. Ken, thanks for the explanation. That was helpful.
You're welcome.
I can just just one question. Does the transfer of these funds or the amount of those funds impact our ability to apply for state grants to help fund dredging projects?
You know, we're we're in compliance with all statutory requirements by putting the fifty percent in and all mooring fees. So we're not required to do this. This just kind of goes above and beyond. So there's no statutory requirement to do this to make us eligible for grants. I think this is just sort of a better housekeeping so that we have funds in reserve for for dredging and any capital expenses that the town might have you know, between dredging cycles. We, this was contemplated back in 2009. It 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 didn't, it didn't happen. And then, you know, we went ten years and dredging came, and we said, wow, we need money. And then it was contemplated again and and in 2019, and and it was decided that we should have have a have a waterways fund. And and that's when we came up with this article, and I believe it's happened. I don't want, I'm not, I think it's that we've put it into the warrant art, it warrant every year, I think.
Yes.
Yes.
A better housekeeping, I think, approach now. It's not, it's not a requirement right now for grants or anything like that, but it certainly doesn't hurt to 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 be able to show, you know, legislatures and and the governor's office, or whoever it might be, that, you know, we're really putting our our funds into this, you know, revenues into this fund and reserving them for our waterfront. I think that 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 can certainly help.
Great. Tom, did you have anything you wanted?
I was just going to point out, just to clarify this, so everybody understands that the numbers we're talking about, these, the the projected dollars for this effort is relatively small. It'll it'll total about eighty five thousand dollars. So.
Okay, great. Are there any members of public with comments or questions? Seeing none, oh, Liz, that was not a hand raise, was it?
All right, it wasn't a hand raise, but I will just make a comment that the boat excise tax, just so people know that we're we're not counting that in local receipts, that that is all going into this waterway fund, and we we're planning on in that.
That's right.
Fashion.
I am now prepared to accept a motion on Article M. Anyone making a motion on Article M?
Let me do, I make a motion.
I will, sorry.
It's okay.
I've lost my vote list here. I make a motion to recommend favorable action of Article M.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
And Joe, I approve. Thank you. And Ken, again, great to see you.
You're welcome.
Next item on our agenda is the Lincoln School Apartments Calendar Year 2022 Budget as distinct from a fiscal year 2022 budget. And Amy, great to see you here. And I believe we also have Craig Chisholm, did I pronounce that right, Craig? From Corcoran, thank you. Thank you for being here. So Tom, any reason to have you tee up, or can I?
I know, just Art has been following this project. So to the extent there are any questions for our office, Art is the Art is the point.
He's the go-to guy. Okay, we'll start with Amy.
Good evening, everyone. And I I guess what I would like to do, if this makes sense, I think all of you have a copy of the budget. And, you know, my apologies, I I believe it actually came to you today, and that wasn't the intent. So what I might try and do is walk you through the budget. I suspect there'll be questions. I will answer those I can. Craig is very familiar with how the budget is built from an operating standpoint, and we may need to agree that there were some, there'll be some takeaway and some follow-up. Does that sound like a reasonable approach?
It does. Thank you.
And, you know, I have the budget up in on my screen, and I'm prepared to walk through it. I don't know if I need to share my screen. Is that the best way to do it?
That would be helpful.
Okay, so let's see if I can pull this up.
And if you can't, I know Art has it on his screen as well. Oh, got it. There we go.
Okay, something, something might happen. Okay, so, um, and I may not be able to show it all at once, and and raise your hand if I'm making people nauseous because I'm scrolling too quickly. But this budget and the template that you see in front of you is something that marries a couple of things. It takes the annual operating budget that Corcoran has done since inception of the town's ownership of the property. And it's added to it a forecast so that we can see what might, at the end of the year, be a potential distribution to the town in the form of a cash flow rent. And that forecast until recently really hadn't been part of the conversation between the Board of Managers Staff and the Select Board. But as we remember with the Lincoln School Windows Project, that was something that we spent some time talking about. So and then the second, as we scroll through, and I'm going to come back, but we have an operating budget that forecasts a number of potential cash flow rent. Then we have a replacement reserve analysis, and that shows the amount of cash that sits in a replacement reserve whose funds are typically used for capital expenditures. And then we have a brief summary of the funds available to pay for the window project, the large capital project that is underway now. So I'm going to start at the top, which is a good place to start. I guess a couple of things. You have this up in Excel, so you can see the very number of units that we have at sixty. I will say that this date is actually a misnomer. This was the last time the format was agreed to by town and Board of Managers. It's actually been updated since then because we now have projected twenty-one year-end numbers, which was not available at the beginning of twenty of December. And so what we do at the beginning of the year, approximately in October each year, Corcoran will develop a budget for us. And we'll start with income, and those income are the rents from the tenants. And the difference between their their subsidized amount and their actual income, or what can they can afford to pay is remitted to us via the HUD contract, the Section Eight contract. And that number is scheduled to go up every this year by one percent. And that's based on the contract that we have with HUD. So you see total income increasing by approximately one percent, and that's the number that's built into that row eighteen. The vacancy that you see, and this might be a question because it seemed would seem to jump out to me, in twenty-one, you do see actual vacancy higher than budgeted. And what that that was a result of was there was actually higher than usual turnover. So every time a unit a resident leaves for one reason or another, that unit has to be turned. There has to be paint, maybe a replacement of some fixtures, and that causes the unit not to have income for a period of time. And then later in the income statement, you'll see the costs associated with any improvements to the unit, but that reflects thirteen units in in twenty-one that were turned over, and we don't expect as many in twenty-two, but more than we budgeted for in twenty-one.
Amy, if I can just just get clarification on that. So is the vacancy percentage a snapshot in time at the end of the year, or is it an average during the year?
I think it's actual, so it would be over the course of the year, but I'm going to phone my friend right away, Greg, Craig. It's not a twelve thirty-one balance. It's over the course of the year.
It's an actual number. That's what, those are actual numbers that we ended up with.
So I I understand it's an actual number, but what what does that number represent? Does it represent a vacancy rate at a point in time, or is it is is it averaged over a period of time?
It's from the date the resident moves out till the actual apartment is refilled.
But it's it's reflects that over the period of time, from the beginning of January twenty-one to the end of, and they're not gone for that long, but that's that was what the property experienced.
Got it. Okay, sorry to interrupt.
Okay. Then we move down to the next category of expenses referred to as controllable expenses. And you see those increasing, recommended an increase from the budget. What was budgeted in twenty-one, but down from actual twenty-one. And those budgets include they include administrative expenses, payroll expenses, operating expenses. And what's other? And those, I would say, would be rental expense. So renting expense, administrative payroll, which includes the staff onsite. It's got trash removal is in here and utilities. Then our next category of expenses is non-controllable, and those show a an increase over the twenty-one approved budget, as well as the twenty-one actuals in controllable expenses, non-controllable expenses, excuse me. The categories here include management fees, our audit fees are in here, building insurance is in here. And those are the primary categories. Then we go to our tax, rent, and reserve line item, and that's that is pretty straightforward. Real estate taxes are as billed. The base rent is calculated every year. There's a conversation between Gene Montgomery and the team at Corcoran who builds this budget, and that rent reflects the cost of the debt service on the general obligation bonds. What is important to note is on cell D forty-seven, there's a replacement reserve line item amount proposed, and that reflects the contribution that's suggested in the last capital needs assessment, which was done in twenty sixteen. And that amount is, as you see, just under seventy thousand dollars. We are in the process of having a capital needs assessment completed, and it is expected that that number, that annual contribution will increase significantly. And so that contribution will have an impact to the operations of the property on a go-forward basis, as money is set aside in the replacement reserves for future capital needs. And then we come down to other operating expenses, and in twenty twenty-one, those non-operating expenses of thirty thousand dollars are related to but we will be, based on our budgeted project cost for the windows, we will be using some funds from operating cash to pay for the total windows project, and that's the hundred sixty-three thousand dollars you see there. That math, incomeless expenses results in a total cash flow, ninety percent of that projected cash flow is three hundred eleven thousand dollars. That is the simple math. I think what's really important for me to emphasize is the the number that's associated with the replacement contribution is very likely to change, and I expect to come back to you to present an updated calendar year twenty-two budget with a new capital needs assessment influenced replacement reserve contribution. We the next table is the the current analysis as of twelve thirty-one twenty-one, there's four hundred seventy-three thousand dollars at the ending balance, starting twenty-two. The expectation is that we will contribute sixty-eight thousand dollars to the replacement reserves and withdraw two hundred fifty thousand for the approved window project. And then we will end with a balance of two hundred ninety thousand. Now, question, a question was raised, well, why wouldn't you just spend all of that down? Why would you not, why would you look to your operating cash to to contribute to any cost for the window projects? As you may remember, this is a property that receives a Section Eight subsidy from HUD. And as part of the conditions of that contract, they would like, the federal government wants to see a certain minimum amount in a replacement reserve, and very, and they will actually, we will require their consent for any withdrawals from these replacement reserves. And that's not expected to not be granted, but it is another process. The minimum amounts that are customarily included in a replacement reserve is an amount that is consistent with a capital needs or a property capital needs assessment. And again, the one that is that we have on hand dated twenty sixteen suggests approximately two hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars should be the ending balance at the end of twenty twenty-two. And so cascading from there, a withdrawal of two hundred fifty thousand dollars this year to complete the window project allows us to meet that minimum threshold at two hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. And then you see below the a rough sum of the window project itself, the total projects expected, including a contingency, to be a million four. We have funds that were awarded at annual town meeting sixteen of a million dollars. They will be spent first for those for that capital project. The replacement reserves would be the next area that we would tap with HUD consent, and then if we need to spend a full amount of a million four, we would go to operating cash.
Amy, so I I assume that concludes your review?
That is my review.
Thank you. And I will turn this over to Art if you have any additions or comments that you'd like to make.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Joe, and members of the board. Just, I think it's useful to maybe take a few steps up from this very detailed review. That what what you heard tonight is an annual requirement, and it reflects an ongoing engagement on the part of our land use and development team with Amy, with with Craig regarding the Lincoln School Apartments project. You know, previously, we we approached you and you, the board, and secured your approval for a lease amendment to allow the windows replacement project to go forward. An important point to mention regarding this particular budget. We worked very closely with with Amy, with the land use and development team and council to be sure we got to a format that reflected some of the key concepts in the lease amendment so that we can map the operating budget to concepts that we've got embedded in in the the lease amendment, so that there's a there's a clear connection between the two. Took a lot of work, a lot of a lot of focused effort on on Amy's part and others, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Art. Liz, any questions?
Yes, thank you, Amy and Craig and Art. I know the the budget template has has been a big a big project, and it's 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 great to see it in action. So thank you. Um, I was going to ask about the windows project, but I think you covered that. Um, I was gonna ask about the windows project, but I I think you covered that um, Amy, so thank you. Um, as far as the the capital assessment, is that still on track to be, do you have the draft already?
Um, there's a draft that's been circulated, um and Corcoran is now reviewing the draft. Couple of questions are coming in regarding sequencing, regarding costs. Making sure they have access to all the information that Corcoran has. On, you know, the history of the work that's been done, so I hope to have a meeting with Corcoran and and the. Consultant in the next week, and the expectation is once um as a follow up to that. The Board of Managers will um look at the draft, do a site visit, and then um. Consider a draft as amended and then vote on it, and then we would make a presentation to this board.
Okay, great, great. Um, you mentioned COVID expenses. Could you just scroll back up? I didn't. And what that covers and it um. Was there any federal funds?
Um, so it's the it's this cell right here, thirty thousand dollars of COVID. Expense and and Craig, can you speak to any fed, what's actually in the COVID expense line item? And was there any federal um? Money that was received by Corcoran that was directed to this property?
Yes, um included in that price was um three days a week of uh disinfecting all touch points. On the property. Um, we also included uh two a day trash pickup for the residents. So that there'd be less lingering in the hallways. And then we ended up getting sixty six hundred dollars uh back from mass housing. To help pay for the cost of the COVID expenses we incurred.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, and you see us needing that going forward, or when do you see that ending?
We've ended the touch point, we um the maintenance manager takes care of that now. We did continue the trash pickup two days a week as the residents um did did like that part of the um. Of uh of what we were doing, so we did keep that, and we did move that up into trash removal as opposed to in a COVID expense.
Okay, got it, thank you. Um, and in terms of the vacancies, is this pretty standard, or do you have any concerns about that rate?
It's um it. It's based on the last couple, maybe two to three years, it's it's been somewhat high. We we don't anticipate, you know, we, you know, we don't anticipate a high turnover at sixty apartments. You know, roughly, you know, maybe ten percent, um maybe, you know. But in some years, you do have more than than you expect, and um. We ended up turning all, turning over, we we have four two bedrooms on on the property, and we ended up turning all of them over. And what happened was uh one person had to transfer it to another apartment. So you have, you know, that expense as well, while there they have to wait for another apartment to come over and then. Wait for them to move out into the, transfer into the new, into the one bedroom. So, but vacancy has been high the last couple of years, um unfortunately.
So, can I can I add to that or maybe pro- provide some context for that? So, you know, vacancy in some ways I think of is when you have an empty unit. So we have had unit turns, so thirteen units out of sixty is more than, you know. Ten percent of the number of units, but in terms of the financial impact to the property. That was easy, that was readily absorbed, and and Craig, correct me if I'm wrong, but it also. Allowed us the opportunity to do some needed um maintenance, you know. Properties need um units need to be painted, they need to be um, you know, the there's a part of the units that have um. Floor coverings that may need to be replaced, that's when you look at um whether or not um. The um the appliances are in good shape, so that's a natural time to evaluate that. And with residents who are longstanding residents, sometimes they are. Reluctant to ask for that type of term, we've encouraged them to ask for it, so um. I I I don't want to mislead anyone by thinking that, well, vacancy was high, it was really turnover and. The number of units that turned this year was higher than normal. Um, you know, this is a property that, you know, maintains. Do we have any vacant units right now, Craig?
Uh, we do not know, but we do have three coming up.
Okay, so so there's there's, I guess, I would say velocity, um but the prop property can um. Financially absorb that, and there's, in in some ways, there's an ability for. The property manager then to get in and make sure each unit is being constantly upgraded. Um, or brought to, you know, repaired as necessary, so I think that's a a positive thing.
Yes, understood. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Amy, thanks so much for the presentation, and thanks for all you're doing, not only for uh the uh for LSA, but also for the Housing Trust. So thank you. Um, hey, just real quick, I know you said you're doing a capital assessment, and your budget looks great. After the windows project, what else do you anticipate to be uh any some of the big capital needs?
I think um the first item that and that we probably are gonna look at is a new generator. Um, the other major categories include um. Looking at the roof and um the roof is not leaking, but it, you know, is of a certain age, so we wanna make sure. That um we are comfortable with how it's, how well it's functioning. There is some electrical work that has been suggested. And um and frankly, the biggest thing for the residents would be a refresh of the common areas, and that is not a. You know, it's it's like your own home, you know, do you replace the roof or your sewer line, or do you paint paper? Which one gives you more joy? And um I I would say a a refresh of the common areas, the corridors. And the the stairwells, I think that would be something that the um the residents would really enjoy.
Great, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Amy. Um, so I I do have a couple of questions. Um, I see a line item for real estate taxes. Could you explain to me why that's the, I I thought this was town owned property?
It is town owned property, but as a condition of the acquisition of the property from um the Abbey. In two thousand and seven, we agreed that we that there would always be real estate taxes.
So, so I guess, Tom, is this a um payment in lieu of taxes, or is this actually deemed as taxes?
This is cash.
I understand, but um Tommy, there?
I was saying wonderful things, just muted.
Okay, so I know there was like, for example, with the water company, they pay tax, they pay, they pay amounts for the electric company in lieu of taxes. Are these actually considered taxes, or are they payments in lieu of taxes?
They're they're not set up and being uh billed as a pilot agreement. Um, they're received funds. Perhaps designed and and sized to to match uh what the tax might look like. But it's not set up as a pilot. Like Amy said, it's cash received.
Right, but in in in, well, with the electric company, it's also cash received, um but.
Yeah.
I I just didn't understand the classification there. If we can move on to your maintenance line. Which was where, that's um. It's row twenty seven. Could you explain why it dropped down uh by nearly twenty percent?
So maintenance and um maintenance in um. Twenty one is high, and that's part of the reason it dropped, actual maintenance is high. And um included in this is where you see the thirteen units of turn and the impact. Of refreshing units. You also see, I think, um. What is known as um a a category called reasonable accommodations. Craig, do I have this? Is this included here when we do the tub cuts?
No, that's um in included in in the maintenance. Um, uh, you have. If you bear with me here, you have the cost of um. Let's start, go down the line. It it starts with um ground supplies, uh what's, you know, flowers for the property. Your grounds contract, um aeration, fall cleanup, flowers and planting, mowing for twenty six weeks. Uh, mulch and uh mulch and mulch spread, you have your spring cleanup, you have your summer shearing. You have an arborist uh in there. Also including in there is apartment cleaning for the turnovers, as well as uh any steam cleanings that need to be done. Common area carpet cleaning, uh window washing, um you have repairs material, what it need, what. What it costs to buy faucets, um any supply, you know. I'm just saying faucets, but like any handles for, you know, kitchen uh refrigerator doors. Also in here is, you know, any other repairs needed um throughout the year or for the apartment while the person's living there. Anywhere from plumbing to electrical, um, you know, as well as roof and gutter repairs if if needed. Your elevator maintenance is in here, as well as the state inspection, the monthly uh contract you have with your your elevator company. Um, you also have uh heating and air conditioning, if you need the boilers repaired or um or anything like that. Um, you have sewer and drain cleaning, um with sewer to clear clogs, um you have fire and safety. Uh decorating materials, the cost for shades and things like that, decorating contract, the cost to um turn up to paint the apartment. Um, and you know miscellaneous expenses as well. So in that ma- it there's a lot of categories when it comes to maintenance. With the turnovers last year, we spent a little more than, as you can see, than we budgeted. So, you know, based on last year and what and, you know, what we experienced and what, you know. So we we upped it a little bit more, so we we were hoping not to go to that number again, but you know. Uh, is that helpful?
Yes, thank you.
And and just to be clear, that hundred twenty thousand dollars, twenty six thousand of it is decorating. And that's going to be associated with um the unit turns and what was budgeted for the decorating line item last year, it was six thousand dollars.
Okay. Um, and just uh the just final comment or question on the the vacancy rate. So as I understand, the vacancy rate, that's not calculated on based on units, it's it's the number of days vacant. Divided by the number of rentable days, if you will. Um, and so here we're talking about. Uh, like four hundred and fifteen, four hundred and sixteen days vacant out of nearly twenty two thousand. Uh, number of rentable days, so I I'm I'm not alarmed at all by by that percentage. Did I express that correctly in terms of how the vacancy rates calculated?
Yeah, it's presented as a financial impact, financial loss as opposed to a physical impact, right?
Right, but it's calculated based on days of days vacant.
Yes.
Yeah. Any member of the public with comments or questions on the Lincoln School Apartments uh budget? Seeing none, uh Amy and Craig, thank you for the thorough presentation and uh look forward to working with you both in the future.
Okay.
Have a great night.
Thank you. Tom, are you ready for our COVID nineteen update?
I am. Thank you. Let me try, I'm unmuted, I am. Okay, so the COVID nineteen update for today, January twenty fifth, twenty twenty two, is as follows. The DPH is reporting that the seven day average of confirmed COVID nineteen cases. In Massachusetts has declined substantially from fifteen thousand five hundred ninety three on January sixteen twenty two. To eight thousand two hundred ninety five as of January twenty third. Uh, hospitalizations have fallen from three thousand two hundred nine on January sixteenth to two thousand eight hundred ninety four on January twenty first. Uh, the latest data show that the Hingham case count is roughly level. Uh, DPH is reporting a hundred and seventy four new COVID nineteen cases in Hingham during the fourteen day period, ending January fifteen. And that's compared to a hundred and seventy five cases over the fourteen day period reported two weeks ago. It is important, however, to note that many residents are now taking home-based testing, which is most often not reported, and they're off. And therefore not in these statistics, so as a result, we are assuming that the actual number of positive cases is higher than these statistics show. The overall vaccination rate for Hingham is now eighty three percent. Liz, I can tell you that the DPH is still considering the two-shot um uh program as fully vaccinated. You would ask that one of the prior meetings. As a result, we are um we are catalogued right now as an eighty three percent vaccination rate in Hingham. About forty seven percent of Hingham residents have received a booster dose. And according to the DPH, sixty five percent of Hingham residents ages five to eleven are fully vaccinated. So that number for the children continues to climb, which is good. Uh, temporary COVID nineteen regional testing site update, uh we do, uh Hingham uh is continuing to conduct a regional COVID nineteen. Drive-through testing site in partnership with Cohasset Hall in Situate at three thirty five Lincoln Street in Hingham. Uh, the testing center will be open on Mondays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays from seven to four. And PCR tests are available at no cost to the public. Residents and employees of the four communities will continue to have priority appointment access from seven AM to eleven AM. Online pre-registration is required, and no test will be administered without an appointment, so all participants will be notified. Of test results by email as well. Uh, regarding general protocols, I've said it a thousand times, I think I'll continue to say it just to make sure everyone hears it. Uh, please continue to pre- uh to take precautions to protect yourself and others from COVID nineteen. As we all know, vaccination, wearing face coverings, practicing social distancing, and frequently washing hands, among some other measures. Will help protect all of us. Uh, on January seventh, the Hingham Board of Health did issue a health advisory strongly recommending. The use of face coverings by all patrons, visitors, and employees within any indoor space open to the public in Hingham. The Hingham, the health advisory is directed to all visitors and employees with any in with within any indoor space. In all public places, public housing, assisted living facilities, membership associations, and workplaces in Hingham. The CDC and the Mass DPH uh guidance on face coverings can be found on their respective websites. And the Board of Health is recommending the use of N ninety five, KN ninety five, or a non-woven multi ply surgical mask. Woven cloth masks, gaiters, and bandanas uh provide significantly less protection against uh the airborne respiratory viruses. So uh also remember that any face covering should be fitted closely to one's skin to prevent unwanted gaps and leaks. That's what I have to.
Thank you. Art, anything you wanted to add on on COVID?
Nothing to add, Joe.
Great, thank you. Liz, any questions?
Um, just a question on the testing site, Tom, do we have any um additional data about the the turnaround time of the um PCR tests?
Yeah, so I've I've heard from uh the gentleman that we contracted with, and he tells me that the the average time is uh is now below the four days. It had been above four days, but that they are working on it, we're we're basing it on an average. I would like to see it frankly start approaching two days. I told him that, and uh he tells me they'll continue to work on it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Bill, any questions?
I have questions, thank you.
And I see someone named Beth has raised her hand. Beth, you are muted and invisible.
Sorry. Brockoff Thirty Sixth Pleasant Street, and I just hope that somebody could do some research into checking this testing site. Because there have been a number of occasions which I personally have via my daughter. Been privy to where they are do sending out a test, and despite the fact that it didn't come back. Um, for multi-days, despite calling. for multi-days, despite calling to the actual lab to find out the results, was told that the test was not lost, but, and then she received five days or six days later, a note saying that the test was unable to be tested. And she has spoken with a lot of people as well that say that they were having four and five-day waits. They went out and got testing elsewhere. They would get a positive test back from another site and then get a negative test site from here. And therefore, I'm really feeling like the process in which our town is doing it with the other towns needs to be reviewed. And I don't know who's responsible because I've called the Board of Health and spoken with them and they say it is the third floor. So, I am leaving it in your lap, but I personally think it's been an embarrassment to the town. I appreciate the fact that testing was put out and done because I think it's a definite need. But I think we need to evaluate why we're sending our tests all the way to California and whether, when the tests arrive because they've dried out or because there's this extended length in time, they're not getting appropriate results. So, I don't know what, who has the authority, but I'd love some ideas from you guys as to how to make this better.
Joe, I can take some of that if you'd like.
Yes, I also want to make sure, Beth, that you, Tom, that we make sure that we've got best contact information so that we can follow up with her. I know she gave her address, maybe offline. Beth, if you could send your email information to Tom Mayo. Tom, what is your email address so she can?
Yeah, it's mayoT@hangam-ma.gov.
Okay.
Beth, I'm looking in here, I gotta believe I have actually your phone number in my, in my phone. It's likely, right? We haven't talked in a while, but certainly Beth and I know each other. Beth, I hope you know, you can call me anytime, call my office with questions. I will say that I have spoken with the provider several times. We are very much working on that, on that return time. I did ask about the more local lab options and I'm being told that many of the local labs are swamped right now and are not, not taking on additional clients, if you will, additional testing clients. And that's part of the reason why they had, this company has a pre-relationship with a company in California, which is why they're using them. And there's not, there's not a clear available option more locally. That's what I'm being told. I'm investigating that to make sure that that is in fact the case, but that's what I've been told when I've asked. They have told me that the average response time is down below the four, the four days. It had been above four days. I, like I just said to Liz, I think that, you know, the goal here is two days, not, certainly not six. And I'm hoping much better than four. We're continuing to work with them on that. You know, obviously, we wanted to do this so it was a town resource, but we don't want it to, to become a hindrance or a problem. So, we're trying to fix these, we're trying to fix these things as best we can.
Yeah, so.
Evaluate whether it, it getting accurate results because that's the bigger problem that I see. That we are providing a lovely service, but if we're not getting accurate results because of the timeframe and because of shipping, has anybody looked into whether sending something across the country? Whether, you know, temperatures make a difference on the swabs. I know, having worked in a hospital, when you would have labs that would be done, if they were not done quickly enough, they were inaccurate.
So, Beth, let me just respond saying that based on what I've heard, that this is unacceptable performance and that we need to make sure that we are imposing appropriate performance standards on this vendor. It's, it's, we will look into this and make sure that it's addressed.
I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other public comments. And I do not believe we have appointments for this evening. I will now accept comments from members of the public on items that are not on the agenda. Seeing none, I will move to Town Administrator Select Board Reports. Mr. Mayo, starting with you?
Not tonight. Thank you, Joe.
Art?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Bill?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
And I also have nothing this evening. Thank you all. Our next meeting will be next Tuesday. So, we will not be having a meeting this Thursday. And so, it'll be next Tuesday, the first of February, the day before Groundhog Day, just letting you all know. I will accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.